18-465 South Main Street, here in Jasper. Mr. Raymond, can I ask you to give our all these votes, please?
Good luck to... By her head, please. The grace of the heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight. Lord, we come to you tonight conducting business that's involving the city and the residents of the city. Lord, we would ask you that you give us the common sense and the guidance to make decisions that represents this city, represents all the citizens that we have in our community. Lord, if you would, take each and everything that we try to do, Lord, and let everyone understand we're doing this for the good of the community. Lord, if you would, forgive us of our many sins, and we say this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I would commend to the City Council the departmental reports. We have FYI letter regarding... From the Texas Department of Transportation regarding to work that will be done on US-96. Also, we have a monthly code enforcement monthly report, which is very good, very informative. So, thank you very much for that. Before we go to our public comments section, I want to commend the City of Jasper employees who are so consistent in cleaning up after we have an affair where... At the... Whether it's at the City Hall, whether it's at the park, whether it's at the town square. We had an event this past Saturday, and I was by there Saturday afternoon, and there was trash piled up, and Sunday morning, it was all gone. And I just... Please pass that along. All the good work. Excellent job, and they're so consistent. We have two folks who have signed up for public comments. I will remind you that this is a time where we are not permitted to respond to them and say, "Thank you very much," whether it's chewing us out or commending us for something well done, and we'll say, "Thank you." We are... We always look and appreciate both the good and the bad. I will also remind you, those that are presenting, that your comments should be limited to three, maximum of five minutes. So, we will start our first person. Doug, and Doug, your handwriting is better than most doctors and most lawyers, but I cannot... Help me on the last thing, please.
Clove here.
Clove here.
Yeah.
All right, sir.
Up here.
You may. Where are your most comments?
My name is Doug Clove here. I'm the Director of Operations for T.O.N.E.D.'s fish camp. I'm on 96 going towards the lake. And I'm coming here to ask for some help or some advice on... We're needing some city sewer out there. We currently have septic system out there, and we have the... An outside area that we added onto the restaurant, which has been very good for everybody. We have live entertainment. We employ, you know, local entertainers, adding people to dine outside. But it never fails on Friday and Saturday night, the wind blows just the right direction, and we have an awful smell in the front of the restaurant. And we're just trying to get some kind of relief somehow that we can get, possibly get some sewer out there to us. I don't know what we need to do to do that, what the city can do to help us, but we're open to listen to any advice and any ideas and thoughts that we could do just to help make, you know, our dining experience for our guests a little bit better. That's all we're asking. And anybody that can help us out, we'd be greatly appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly is our city manager, and people think that me as the mayor and the council member run this place. We really don't. It's really Denise who does that. So, if you will talk with her, I'm not sure what the restrictions or what leeway we have, but she certainly can help.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Doug is second, Mr. Bob Mayhaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilman. Pleased. Appreciate you giving us a few minutes. I'm here representing the Jasper Chamber of Commerce. We're requesting that the Chamber... The council allow us to use the terminology for certain parts of Jasper. It's Old Town Jasper. There's towns that have Old Town Spring. There's a place in Colorado called Old Town, Colorado. These areas are designated and are used as part of the advertising process. What we're hoping to do, if you'll allow us to use this as a term, initially is to ask the city to help us get signage through the state of Texas for free put up on 190 at... 190 and South Main, saying, "Turn here, Old Town Jasper County Courthouse." Also, one on Lamar saying the same thing. We want to put together a brochure celebrating the fact that we have one of the finest collections of homes in this town you won't see anywhere from about 1900 to 1950. And many of those homes are in excellent shape and are well worthy of someone taking their time to come see them. And if we can get that designation, then we can advertise it through the council as a thing. We think the zone should roughly be, starting with the PD, Baydy Orton House Lake, going up to the cemetery, roughly Buoy Peace Tree, South Main, over to the Art League, that section. You may or may not have noticed that the Chamber of Commerce has repainted the concrete obelisks in town with the idea that those marked off in the area that was the town in the late 1920s, early 30s. And so, it's something that kind of exists anyway. We just need to put a name to it. If you'll allow us to do that and request signage, then we can sell that as one more reason to turn off the road and come to Jasper. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
We have action item number one, consider approval for two sets of minutes, the annual budget hearing, and whether it's a call city council meeting on September 10th, and the special call city council meeting on September 12th.
Second.
I have a motion in second for the approval of the two sets of minutes, showing discussion of questions. If not all in favor, signified by the usual side of voting. Motion carries. It's unanimous. Action item two, consider approval of five bid submissions from Land, Garden, Logan Blair and Sampson for resale of tax trust property.
I would... If we could, I would just make a motion that we combine all these into one, and I would make a motion to proceed.
You better do it separately.
Do you have...
I don't know anything besides what was presented to us, to ladies from Land, Garden. I didn't speak to her. She just sends the information in, but it does have all the information that we've asked them to pass as far as the physical address and what comes back to us, that we'll get them back on the tax roll.
I would certainly accept the suggestion that we consider all five together and entertain the motion. And then?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the approval of the five bid submissions. Any questions? If not all in favor, signified by the usual side of voting. Motion carries. It's unanimous. Number three, consider ordinance 10-15-18 authorizing the acceptance of payment of utility bill charges and fees for credit cards.
Mayor and councilman, this was something that the Speaker in the Finance Department had... We've gone through and reviewed. Over the last three years, which really started in April of 16, we have spent almost over $41,000 in credit card fees, which is the... When we started offering credit card payments to our customers, this allowed them another option to pay by credit card. But in the same token, this is $41,000 that we have paid out of our pockets by letting them use the credit cards. It's a convenience fee that we're asking to be reimbursed for. We're really not... I mean, as Robbie can probably give you more information than I do. It's very nominal. She's gone through and done lots of research, besides all the surrounding areas that do that. I pay for... If I choose to pay my water bill out of the river, a $35 water bill costs me $4. But I know that that bill is paid when I click on that online, and that's my choice to make. Even though it's coming out of my checking account right then and there, I still pay that fee. So, what we're doing is we're asking you to allow us to start charging our customers. It goes up to like $3, and the maximum was, Robbie, $3.
$3.49.
And 5% of the payment if it's under $70, $69.
How much yearly? You say you spent 41 in three years?
Okay. This last year, we spent... The one that we just ended in September, we spent $21,764.30.
Can that come out of the SRMPA? Can we even that out with that?
This is whatever choice that you want to do. We're just... We're running this... It's my obligation and my position to give this to you as the City Council, what our expenses are. If... Whatever council chooses to do, if you choose for us to continue to absorb this fee, this is what we're continuing to do. But we're just trying to beat up with the times.
The fees that we're charged are... Is that what was put in here, the $3.49? I mean, they... Visa charges the city of Jasper.
Basically, this is what the, you know, the people that we deal with came up with as a flat fee, because different credit card, debit card companies charge different percentages and different fees depending on which card the customer uses. So, $3.49 is what we came up with as an average to keep the city from having to pay anything. And the way that this is going to work, we will not have to pay anything. We're working with the company so that that $3.49 covers everything.
If you... Everybody has a vehicle in here that registers at the county. If you pay for your re-inspection every year, you have to add $5 if you just pay by mail.
You have to pay by... If you don't pay by check at the county, it's a free... You have to pay a $4 fee, $15.
Or just if you... If you just send it by the mail, it's extra $5.
So, right now, we don't charge anything, so you try... So, you want to take it to where we start to charge them when they come to pay with the card, both with cash and check, they don't pay no fee.
That is correct. So, it's optional. They do not have to use a credit card.
But the way that things are going, people may not be carrying checks anymore. Everything is kind of moving into cards. So, if we are getting the... If we're getting money back from selling electricity, and we have money there, we may as well just keep doing a service to the people, not charge them.
Just remember that it's going to increase at the end of the fiscal year of '17, 5.53% of the payments that we took in through customer service were by debit credit card.
Correct.
This past year, it's increased to 8.33. So, we went from $15,000 in fees last year to almost $22,000 this year. Each year, it's going to go up. Plus, we have customers, not only individuals, but also commercial customers who would like to see us go online and take payments that way.
Correct.
And in so doing, you're just going to keep increasing what it's costing us in the city. So, again, it's up to you as to whether you think that you want the city to absorb this cost, but I look for it next year. It's going to be more than $22,000. It's just going to keep going up, up by foot, because people aren't using those cards.
Is there a... For an online fee, different from a credit card, is that different from a credit card?
It would be the same. If we did it online, it would still be the same transaction fee, whether they came and did it in, you know, in person or did it online. It would be the same.
Well, my personal opinion is that this is a convenience for the utility users of the City of Jasper, providing that convenience, but it shouldn't be a discount, and that's why we're giving them the discount when we have to start it. If they elect to not carry a check and just use a debit card, then that's their option. But I will only have a vote if there is a tie, but I don't see giving a discount and charging the City of Jasper $21,000 annually. Will it be going up?
Is this for credit cards or credit cards and debit cards?
Oh, no. And it'll be online payments. It'll be online credit cards or debit cards. The only time it will be a non-portion fee is when they come in with a check, a money order, or a cashier.
This is one of these cut the baby in half deals. You know, personally, I almost see us disincentivize people from paying, and I want to make it as easy for them to pay, as convenient. That's good money for us. When it comes off a credit card, we can be assured that money's going in the bank, or at least that portion of it that we get versus when we take a check.
No, not necessarily. It doesn't necessarily approve it. It can come back and keep...
When it runs through?
Yeah, it can come back and kick it back.
Sure. I've never heard... I've never seen that. That's news. Well, on the other hand, you know, I don't believe the city should be passing out discounts as the mayor pointed out for... We shouldn't be eating them.
I guess my question is, when you say discount, if we've been doing this for three years, what do you mean by discount? So, how is a discount because they're paying their bill?
Well, it's...
What are we charging them? So, we're not giving a discount on their bill, we're just adding on to what they already owe to pay as a fee for using an actual transaction of a different payment.
We are not adding on. They are elected to add it, add it on by using the debit card, credit card, or online fee. They are giving you a discount. The fee should be, let's say, $50.
Right.
That should be $50 going into the City of Jasper coffers. It is getting a discount, so they're really... They're only paying that to the City of Jasper, or say, $46.61.
Is that correct? So, if I owe $50, I use my card, so you're going to turn $53, the $50 is going to go to the city, the $3 is going to go to...
The processing company.
We're not charging the city.
It's the processing company this time, because that person has elected to use debit card,
credit card, or online payment.
But I guess my statement is, because we charge for electricity and we're getting paid for it, why can't we just even out the $1,000, keep it where it at?
It's not this, but you're also discounting one other customer. So, you come in and pay with your credit card, and we allow you to pay with that credit card, and we pay that $3.49 on your behalf to the credit card. Well, Mr. Schofield comes in and pays his dollar, his $50 fee, well, he's paying $50, whereas you're paying $46.51.
But the way that the payment is going, we already know that, as you say, Ms. Robbie, the next five years, probably 50% of the people paying their bills are going to be using credit cards. So, I'm just saying, what does it hurt us to compensate with what we're... I mean, we're already selling electricity, and we're not giving people an actual break on their electricity bill.
Electricity, water, sewer, garbage.
I understand that method. I'm just saying, we're already getting rewarded for selling them. Why can't we give back to the people and give them a break from charging them fees what we've been doing for the last three years? How do we hurt and what do we lose?
Well, we're discriminating against the guy that pays checks. That's fine.
But as we know, within the next five, 10 years, probably people will be carrying cash, and thanks on everybody offering checks anymore. So, if we're going to be moving with the town five years from now, we're going to run into this in the future anyway.
Well, and just to let you know, Kirby Bill charges $3.55 flat rate. Wood Bill charges $3.55 flat rate. When you start moving out into other areas, the local government code allows the municipality to charge up to 5%. And when we did our research, we said 5% just wouldn't work. You've got somebody who is paying $400, you know, on theirs, and you're charging them, and, you know, Beaumont, I think, is 2.25%, Huntsville, 2.5%, Jersey Village around Houston, they're charging a full 5%. You know, that's $5 on every $100. So, our $3.49, when you start comparing, especially if you're a commercial business and you may be running $1,200 a month on your services, you know, you see what I'm saying? So, $3.49 is what we came up with that would balance it as a flat rate without having to charge people a larger amount.
So...
So, if you're talking about keeping up with the times, your neighboring cities around here are doing the same thing because they can afford to.
So, so long as it was 5% or 3%, it was good to eat the cost.
I'm sorry.
No, you were saying when we first started, about 3% or 5% of users...
No, no, I'm talking about that's what other cities are charging.
No, 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 I'm saying when we first started in 2016, you say about 5%.
I don't know what the percentage is. Like I said, it depends on what card you're using.
Well, also Rashad, when they got started, there weren't many people paying credit cards.
That's what I'm saying. When it was a 5, it was okay.
Yeah, that was not a charge. That was the percentage of payments that we were receiving compared to total payments. We were not charging it at all. I'm telling you, how... When I said 5% and then 8%, that's the percentage that we're using debit credit cards of payments that we were taking in from customer service. So, it's growing. It's more and more people.
Which means it's costing the city more and more money.
More and more money.
But what I'm saying is, we already get paid for selling the electricity. We get a reward for selling it somewhere else, so why do we penalize it? I mean, we just keep it like it is. We have the funds.
I'll entertain a motion on action item three. Go ahead. What's the motion? What's that? All right, have a motion in second for the questions. Ms. Johnson?
No, I just have a suggestion and just go by the ATM, get cash. That car's a problem.
Take care. All right, have a motion in second for the approval of ordinance 10-15-18. All in favor, signified by the usual side of voting. Any opposed? All right. The motion carries three to two with Ms. Johnson, Mr. Rashad voting against it. Item number four, consider approval for advertised for request of qualifications for engineering, design, and architect for multi-purpose sports complex.
If I could have just a minute, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to read a couple of paragraphs.
Do it. Where would you hit it?
Okay. I was asking for permission here to have four for just a second to read a couple of paragraphs. When I decided to run City Council in 2012, one of my top priorities was pushing the city to involve itself with providing opportunities for our residents to improve their quality of life. Think about this. When our children graduate from high school here and move away and settle in other places, what is it that they report to you that they like about where they live now? What's important to them? Is it the infrastructure of the streets? I doubt it. What they like about these other places are the opportunities available to them to do things, and that's what... That's what our families are lacking here, things to do. However, we now have a unique opportunity to build something extraordinary for our community that doesn't involve tax dollars or utility receipts or borrowed money. We looked at one such opportunity in a glaring need five years ago, the renovation of the J.Y.B.A. Park, and agreed unanimously that the plan on the table at the time was not workable. As most of you will recall, the J.Y.B.A. facility is 60 years old now and yet remains the most used venue in this area. Its problems have not gone away, however. And due to the age of the park and the ever declining volunteer participation, it is struggling even more to keep up with the much-needed repairs to its grounds and maintenance of electrical and lighting systems, fencing and field maintenance, as well as common areas like tending to the bathrooms and trash pickup. For many out-of-town visitors whose children come here to play baseball and softball, that park is the only impression of the City of Jasper that they have. It is not a very good impression, but one which we have the resources now to change. This agenda item is a request of the City Council to consider investing in the future of Jasper, both for its residents to improve their quality of life and for our local businesses as well. With the nature of tournament sports these days, towns and communities with top-notch facilities can reap economic benefits as never seen before. This is not your father's Little League any longer. This is big business. These recreational facilities, if done right, are every bit as impactful for their communities as any industry that might want to move to town, lest the environmental issues. We have always recognized the need for more jobs here, but we have yet to recognize the benefits of having other people's money spent here on a regular basis, and that's what these facilities can provide for their communities. A new ballpark will not cure Jasper's economic woes overnight. It will help tremendously to turn things in the right direction. I respectfully request and plead with my fellow council members to support this item, both with your vote and your enthusiasm. Let's not proceed forward wringing our hands at every turn, but rather, let's have some fun with this, knowing that going forward, we're building something that families here will enjoy and our local businesses will benefit from for years to come.
That having been said, I'm moved to approve the item.
Hold on. Hold on.
Question.
Quick, I got one question.
Have a motion in second. Any questions?
Question. Couple of months ago, there was something on the agenda where it was, I guess, an ax for, I guess, a fee to be waived, and I couldn't vote because I live on the property. Do you remember that? I would be staying from voting because I live on the property. So, is he able to vote even though this is his project and this is what he's pushing? How does he have a motion to approve if I couldn't even vote on a project that I lived at a couple of months ago because I live on the property? As the mayor, you told that I couldn't vote. When he asks if I could be exempt from voting because I live on the property, I'm asking he... Can he be exempt to approve because he's pushing the actual project on this? No. So, I couldn't vote then, but he...
I don't recall what that was ever.
That's more than two months ago.
You couldn't vote. You couldn't vote on that, Rashad, because what we're voting on were improvements to a facility that you live at.
Correct.
Well, I don't... I'm not going to live at the ballpark.
Okay. No problem.
Question. Isn't Lufkin also in the process of doing this right now?
They are. I just found that out.
Aren't they ahead of us in their process?
Huh?
Aren't they ahead of us in their process?
I don't know. I just got word of that.
I don't think they are. I think that they are... I think they're at the discussion stage, but I think it's something that they are... That they are going to go through with now. The size or anything else besides...
It's up there. We don't have to find out from...
Is this a situation similar to what we had with... On the draw like? Did the... Was going out for bids?
In order for us to go... I mean, to go further with this project, even to see if the cost is feasible or whatever, this is the first step that has to be taken in order for them to approve us to request for qualifications for firms, engineers, architects, builders, construction companies or whatever that would ever be interested in a project like this, if the city was to go forward with it. But we can't... We can't go out and ask them anything without your approval.
Is this point is being requested at this point, is it eating calls to the City of Jasper?
No.
No, sir.
I didn't think so.
No, sir. Not at this point, but after we...
But once we start doing the process, then we'll...
If we request for qualifications and we get the qualifications back in their review, then they will... It will be brought back to you to approve this firm and/or going forward with the project. I mean, you know, they may come back in and say, "We need X number of dollars just to put the numbers together," but we can't go any further until we get this project. And they may, you know, they may have an idea, and they think, "How they can tell you this?" When they put their request for qualifications in there. It's just the same token that we went back, we ask for them, they submit them, we review them, we bring them back to you as council, and then it's back in your hands again to make a decision to go forward, stop it, or ask more questions.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Let me say something to everybody, especially to the council members. This city is famous for putting things off, you know, or, you know, we discuss things, we travel, we see wonderful things for our city, but yet, when it comes down to actually doing it, nobody wants to agree. So, how do you expect J.C. to do their job when this council is not doing ours? You know, as I stated previously at another council meeting, we have voted on many, many wonderful things for Jasper, but I have seen nothing. wonderful things for Jasper, but I have seen nothing materialize other than the downtown beautification. We need this ballpark for our children, we need it for our kids instead of our kids walking the streets, getting in trouble, doing drugs. Let's do something constructive for our children, you know? A lot of them don't have the opportunity to play sports, parents can't afford it, or, or, you know, they weren't chosen to be on the football, softball team, so let's do something for our children. It's, it's not especially for our city, it's for our children of this city. So just think about that, okay, please? That's my request.
I think we all, thank, all the way.
I, I don't see a problem with doing as we've done for Sandy Creek Park, and we have bids come in and say we'd like to go out for bids. If it's not costing us anything, I don't see any problem with it. But I certainly would want to know before we go out and start spending money, what benefits is the City of Jasper gonna get, because there are a lot of, of improvements for the City of Jasper that need to be made. I don't know what Ms. Johnson was referring to when she said that we're famous for, for starting stuff.
We are procrastinators each time.
My...
It's been slow to get started, I know, let me phrase it that way, okay?
And it maybe this is the best money that can be spent, but I've seen a problem in getting forward with it now, but I certainly want to know what amount of money could we anticipate receiving? It's not all about money, there's some people in power who, they, they feel it's all about money, it's not, because, you're right, Ms. Johnson, our kids are our future. That having been said, we have any other questions?
If this goes forward, and you're talking about normal money, but what about the work for the city?
Well, now, if we know forward to this, I mean, there will be another added budgetary out of the expense because there will be maintenance involved in this.
No, no, I think what he means...
From this point forward, doing this would cost hours' labor time put in from city employees.
It would take a nominal amount to get the, the R F Q published in the newspaper, and then a nominal amount of time just to, to review the submissions, and then we will have to do, it will do a little bit more research as far as trying to see the cost, revenue and expense, and just make sure that you, that you're aware of it. It'll, it'll, as in everything, it'll, it'll, it'll cost us some labor, but we'll do whatever council wishes us to do, regardless of...
And it'll come back to us before we start spending money.
Every project we do, we do R F Q for, and it's things we do on a regular basis.
And Mayor, this is something that is not, this is not gonna be a profit, excuse me, a profit center for the, for the city. These parks don't make money, but they generate the economy, and if they're done right, they attract people, other people's money.
I understand.
And probably the, the main benefit to the city would be increased hotel motel taxes, sales taxes within the city, the restaurants, convenience stores, you know, that sort of thing.
That's what I meant, dollar-wise, obviously, it's not gonna generate, it's not gonna pay for itself, but we want to know that what benefits the restaurants, the hotels, the gas stations, convenience stores are gonna receive. We can get an estimate on that, a projection.
And we've seen that information, it's actually been provided to us, Richard Clower wrote that back in...
Where is this stimulus coming from? Tournaments?
Yeah.
Or leagues, local leagues?
Yeah, and I mean, it's primarily tournaments, baseball, softball, girl softball is just exploding in this tournament scene.
Softball.
Soccer, you got flag football, football now, I mean, there's, it's, it's just, it's a going thing. And the thing over in Lufkin, all that does to me is emphasizes the need, we need to get the lead out and get moving. You know, we're gonna have this kind, this type of competition in this area going forward because of the popularity of it. And I'm not at all surprised that Lufkin is finally looking at this. You know, I don't think that should mean we should not, you know, let's not get scared off about what they're doing over in Lufkin, but let's get the lead out and get moving.
Lufkin can't hurt us if we decide to go forward with this complex. There's too many children in the Beaumont area, Port Arthur, Orange, Livingston, and this cold East Texas area, they can't get on a field because they are booked up. Them being sixty miles over there is not gonna hurt us. My grandbabies are driving from Lumberton to Alexandria and Nacotis to, up close to Longview and Tyler to play in these tournaments because everything is full down here. I mean, this can't hurt, and we preach every year about bringing jobs to Jasper, Texas. Let the city take the first step, bring some maintenance jobs, bring some jobs to this community, and they'll pay for theirself in the long run. Your children will have a place to go that grandma and grandpa can come to and be proud they're there. I, I just can't see not doing this. I can't.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd volunteer JEDCO to, we'll do an economic impact study. Once we find out exactly what the parameters are gonna be around the complex, we can tile that information together and come up with some numbers, we'll present that back to council once we get a footprint.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we have a motion in second for the approval to advertise, it's signed in X nine of four, any other questions? All in favor, signified by the usual sign of voting. Motion carries, it's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Act nine of five, consider granting for Jasper County, Sam Rayburn, Chamber of Commerce to reach the creation of logo and name branding for Old Town Jasper. Bob, I'm sorry, we couldn't get to it any quicker than this, but...
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Only question I have, we have the ground in yellow, what proposed area is, are we gonna be married to that...
No.
...area that is in yellow, or can that be expanded? Or who, who came up with the, this in yellow? Bob, do you have...
I, I think I can take the blame for that part. The yellow is the suggestion.
Okay, that's all...
Can we, can we table it to get a little bit more specific of this area?
If you'd like, our, basically, the initial push is to set it up, Blue Peachtree, Main, over to where we have our historical homes, Lady Horton House to the cemetery.
And that's done by the whole chamber?
This will be part of the chamber's advertising, we wanted to do a pamphlet about it, to ask people to come and see our old architecture. I believe to see W P Cook Homes are quite well-known, there's a book about them, we'd like to use that as, there's people that are interested in old architecture, I don't know about you, but if I go into a town and they said, hey, here's the Old Town section, I like to go see courthouses, I'm a fan, and the signings would have to put our courthouse in that zone so that we could advertise it.
I'm asking, is the whole chamber on board with this, and y'all all mad on this, or is this just...
Yes.
...a very brief, put in front of us without the whole chamber?
No, it's a chamber issue, and we've also talked to the local museum that wants to be part of helping to put together the historical section on the, on the rochers. Yes, sir.
Bob, does this tie in with the downtown project?
That's what we're hoping, we want that big sign, if you go on ninety, ninety, one ninety, across town now, that, where South Main runs into the road, there's a little sign there that says, Business District, this way. We want to change that to a big brown sign that says, Old Town Jasper County Courthouse, point five miles. Now I've got something that makes me go, gee, I wanna go see that, or if I say Business District, that's really false advertising, there's not a lot of business in downtown. But there is a reason to turn into Old, Old Town Jasper, to see the buildings, to see the historical objects, which most towns don't have, I think Lake Charles is the closest town that has those in play. This is a way to sell a section.
Bob, I wasn't being critical of the area, I just wanted to know if we were gonna be married...
No, sir.
...to that, okay, does that answer my question? All right, I think we have a motion in second, any other questions? Have a motion in second then for the approval of the granting of the logo for Old Town Jasper, all in favor, signified by the usual sign of voting. Motion carries, it's unanimous.
We thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Try to act on that real quick on this side.
We're gonna try to act on it quickly and get you some stuff to show you.
Act nine of six, consider request of the Jasper Public Library, library, consider approving internet policy changes.
I don't see the need, so I'll go back, the items in, in yellow are the changes, and what they're saying is they're just granting the time limits for what they can use on the computer, and they're changing from a C A S I, which is a monitor system, to a P C cop, and that they're reiterating the fact that the policy itself states that the libraries have the filter on, the age limit, and that they are in compliance with the Child Protection Act, which is just an update to the...
Is this suggested garbage from, does this standard from other municipalities?
Her, my understanding from Ms. Milton is when she goes to all her library conventions and stuff, that this is standard one across the board.
Does this mean that the second paragraph, under G, adults over the age of eighteen, they request filters to be turned off? To me, old fogey, that means someone over eighteen, if they wanted to get into porn, they could ask the filter to be turned off, is that what they're saying?
I understand your question, and I cannot answer you that, I'm sorry.
Does it sound like...
I would think, I would think that's...
Can we table this until we get Ms. Milton into...
I would agree with that, because I can't, I can't tell you that, I would agree the same thing as you did about filters. Hey, what?
All right, council, can we table that?
Would you have a motion to table?
Yes.
Did you make a...
I'll make a motion to table this, I'm...
Second.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds like it's unanimous, so we can table it. All right, act nine of seven, consider salary range reviews.
Mayor and, and city council, this is something I had discussed with y'all previously about us losing our valuable employees, whether they're C D L drivers, linemen, wastewater motor guys with the licenses, and Mr. Whitner could probably update you a little bit, we're not in that, we're not that far off, but it does, will bring us up to current, to give us the option to, if we are fixing to lose somebody, that we're, we've been referring to the council list as a place dominance. So, Joe, you wanna get along with it?
Sure. Basically, I'll, you'll point here on the second page, but what you've got on the first page there are the salary, current salary ranges which are dated on my document sixteen versus the new ones which are on...
All right.
And on page two, the percentage of change in midpoints is actually only nine point oh seven or so. It's not a ten, but I mean, it's...
Joe, are these the proposed?
Yes, the ones on the right-hand side where it says ten eighteen are the proposed ranges, the ones on the left-hand side are the page one.
I didn't get this in my packet, but maybe is it...
He did. No, it's not. That is mine. Yeah.
I don't know what to do.